Folks, we have any questions about the agenda? Why don't we move on then to the FEMA pick 'em update? On page three of our agenda. And our community development director, Gail Hendrickson. Gail?
Hi, good morning Chair Quilah and Commissioners. I'm here today, no PowerPoint or anything, but just to have a discussion with your board about where we're at with the pick 'em implementation and the process that FEMA has put together. And so FEMA began their training sessions finally on October 16th. They've scheduled several in-person training sessions, which staff has attended some of those. And we are all signed up for the virtual presentations that are ongoing. One of the things that we are finding as we're attending these work sessions is that FEMA is continuing to refine its process. We've been advised that the model ordinance is being updated. We've been advised that the Habitat Assessment Guide is being updated. Neither of those have been finalized or published yet, so there's still a little bit of uncertainty.
Analyst, sorry.
Okay, there we go.
So we're still in a state of flux yet where those final documents are going to land. They're updating the reporting requirements and continuing to make changes in what they're telling staff around the state. And I'm sorry Commissioner Thompson, you have your hand up.
Commissioner Thompson, did you have a question?
I can't see myself in the meeting. I'm just trying to.
Okay.
Okay. So despite all this ambiguity, FEMA is continuing to tell us that the December 1st date to choose and implement a pick 'em is still in effect. They do not plan on changing that as of this very point in time. So I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the decision points that your board has coming up. And before I do that, though, I also want to talk a little bit about the Coalition and Chair Quilah, you may want to talk about this as well. But we have been participating in these discussions with the Tillamook Coalition, the Oregonians for Flood Plane Protection. And you remember that your board committed $25,000 to the group. So we had a meeting on October 22nd. We went over the status of where we're at in the lawsuits and things like that. And the decision has been made basically to split the group into two sections. One is the overall larger group, which will get general updates on the status of any litigation that's happening or changes to the pick 'em implementation. But there's also a smaller litigation group, which Klotzup County will be part of. Our next meeting on that is November 12th at 3:00 PM. And Chair Quilah, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that?
No, I think you covered it well, Gail. I mean, this is really, this is the core group that will be looking at what our options are for litigation, certainly Klotzup County being one of the key members of that. And I think that they, to date, they mentioned that they had about $200,000 that has been accumulated for legal action. So that's significant and we'll wait to hear what they have to say on the 12th.
Okay, thank you Chair. So with that, knowing that we have a lot of moving pieces, we have continuous changes in the FEMA side of things, except for the December 1st date, we have potential litigation that may change the pathway of how this is rolled out. But we're still facing that December 1st deadline. And so by December 1st, your board will have to do a couple of different things if you choose. And so we've scheduled these for November 13th. The first thing is that we need to have an official decision from your board about which of the pick 'ems you would like to move forward with. And staff had to prepare the agenda item for the 13th before we had this discussion. But at this point in time, I think staff would recommend going with both the Model Ordinance and the Permit by Permit Guide, simply because it would give people two options to pick from, not that either option is great, but at least gives them a little bit of flexibility. So we will talk about that on the 13th when your board takes that official vote. The other thing that's.
Commissioner Toyoka has a question, I think.
Oh, sorry Commissioner.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Just a question on the, I know we have that December 1st deadline and I know we're to have the litigation issue. What about any, some kind of injunction? Because it's hard to pick when you don't, they don't have the EIS done. We don't know the parameters. Has there been discussion about any kind of action to take on the date of December 1st? To give us any deferment from that, any kind of injunction? That to change that date to when we have some more knowledge to actually make an informed decision?
I'll state my understanding and then again Chair Quilah may have some additional information to provide. But my understanding is at least as of the October 21st meeting with the Coalition, that no injunction had been filed at that point. So I don't know what we may learn on November 12th that may change things. But at this point, as far as I'm aware, no injunction has been filed.
And I agree. I think they were asking the members of the group to weigh in on what option they were going to opt or pick. And they were across the board, you know, many different members are doing different things and there wasn't consensus on what to do next. And then they were going to just meet in the litigation group next week and just decide what to do from there. But there wasn't, I guess, the urgency of putting an injunction in right away.
Did that address your question Commissioner Toyoka?
It does, it does. It just, you know, to me, it just seems unusual that they gave themselves a deferment on time to complete an impartial statement. Yet they want the counties to, you know, to choose. Make, you know, pick 'em choice without any kind of information. It seems flawed the way they're thinking.
And I would agree and the fact that they're trying to refine these rules and changing from meeting to meeting and yet not able to push the timeline back is bizarre to me. It just, it seems like that is something that would be a natural beings that they're trying to formulate this all along. Commissioner Webb?
Thank you. I guess I'm, I would like a little bit of clarity. Gail, you said that this Coalition had split basically into two groups. Could you describe a little bit more what, what those two groups consist of?
Yes, I can. So the Coalition overall Commissioner Webb is still intact. But what they're choosing to do, I think, just in terms of efficiency, is that the entities that have pledged funding towards litigation efforts are going to be, have their own separate group. They'll still be part of the larger group, but they will also be sitting in on these litigation discussions. And then information would be transmitted back to the larger group during a different meeting.
Okay. And is the larger group, are there people, are there agencies or people outside of the county governments who are being affected by this?
Well, anybody who is doing any work in the floodplain would be affected by, by the pick 'em. So it could be a special district, it could be a city or a county. It could be a school district who's looking to maybe expand a school building. It can be private property owners. I know that the, there are a lot of farmers from the Tillamook area who are part of the Coalition because they're impacted by this. So there is a wide variety. There's the Home Builders Association, of course, as part of this as well.
Okay. And, and within Klotzup County, is, are there any municipalities or special districts or other interests who have joined the Coalition?
I don't know if there are any who have actually pledged funds that I'm aware of. Again, Chair Quilah may have some different information, but I know that they have been attending the meetings at this point.
They, they being?
Sorry, the local jurisdictions. I think we've had representatives from Warrenton and for sure. And I'm not sure about the other four cities.
Okay. Good. I'd love to have a list of the Coalition participants. Is that possible? Is there a website?
Yeah, it's Oregonians for Flood Plane Protection is the name of the official organization. And I think it, I don't remember their website off the top of my head, but I can email that link separately to all the board members.
Okay. I would just kind of like to know who's at the table. And, and I assume although Anthony is not at our meeting this morning, that this is, that he's involved in this?
He is actually. And Courtney, yeah, Courtney got on there. Anthony?
Yeah, I'm here, yes.
So and have we, have we lost Commissioner Thompson or is there just something new about what's going on?
No, we have Commissioner Thompson and Commissioner, we have anyone present.
Okay, okay. Wow. So is the meeting on the 12th that you mentioned, is that a Coalition-wide meeting or is it a litigants meeting?
It'll be for the litigation discussion.
Okay, okay, wow. And Mark, you're going to be there?
I am.
Yeah, good, good. Maybe Anthony could, could answer the question that I think Commissioner Toyoka was, was posing about, is there any possibility for some kind of a, for going to court before December 1st? To ask for some kind of action on deferring that December 1st date?
And that's what I think, you know, we'll be talking about in our meeting on the 12th. And also this being a public meeting and this being potential litigation, I wouldn't want to go too much into the strategy that we're going to have moving forward. But definitely offline or in an executive session, I'd be happy to talk to you more about it.
Okay. Great, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Gail?
Okay, so just a few more items. So on November 13th, again, staff will be asking your board to choose one of the pick 'ems. If we fail to choose a pick 'em and notify FEMA by December 1st, we will automatically default to the permit by permit method, the Habitat Assessment Guide. If we fail to notify FEMA at all by December 1st or fail to choose, then we are out of compliance with FEMA at that point. Again, the more, we have also put a moratorium ordinance on the November 13th agenda. This, if it is approved by your board, is considered an emergency ordinance, which means it would need to be approved unanimously. Otherwise, we would most likely have to come back with two public readings. Again, we would then be out of compliance because we would miss that December 1st deadline. And that's because there's one board, regular board meeting in November. Once your board has chosen a pick 'em, whenever that occurs and independent of the moratorium, that staff then has to send a 35-day notice to the State Department of Land Conservation and Development. We will have to send Measure 56 notices to all affected property owners. And then our intent is to schedule whatever code amendments your board directs staff to make for the January 14th Planning Commission for a public hearing. And then for the public hearings with your board, there are two options. And I know you really can't give direction on this during a work session maybe, but we have the option of adopting the ordinance just as a standard ordinance and have it become effective 30 days after the final date, which would be February 12th, would be the second hearing. That pushes us into March for the ordinance to become effective. And our moratorium would end on February 28th. So if we go the route of two public hearings, we will need to extend the moratorium for an additional two weeks. Alternatively, we could again go the emergency ordinance route and just do one public hearing. We could do that as early as January 22nd, have the ordinance effective immediately, which means we could also then rescind the moratorium early. And so staff is trying to keep the moratorium to the minimum amount of time possible, but knowing also that there are a lot of moving parts and that your board has questions and staff has questions. We don't have a lot of answers. So just to let your board know that depending on which route we end up taking with the adoption of the ordinance, we either may need to extend the moratorium by two weeks or we may be able to end it early. So just, unfortunately, that is the best information I can give you today. I'm really here to answer questions from your board and just to again emphasize that we do need to get something to FEMA by December 1st. Otherwise, we will be out of compliance with the NFIP. So, and again, here to answer questions. Thank you.
Any questions?
Okay, well, thank you, Gail. And just to summarize, so we will have the moratorium on the agenda next week. We'll also have the discussion on which option we want to choose of the pick 'ems. And I mean, it sounds like the model ordinance is the best or is, I guess, the optimal one to pick. And then we can decide whether we want to do this in, under emergency fashion in order to discontinue the moratorium early. Or if we want to go the, the regular adoption route, which would be two public hearings in order to adopt. Is that correct?
That's correct. Thank you for the summary.
Okay, well. No questions?
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gail. Next is Georgia Pacific Want a Facility versus Department of Revenue update on page five. And is this? Suzanne, who's going to be, okay. Suzanne, I'll turn it over to you, our county assessor.
Good morning Chair Quilah and members of the board. I'm here to discuss with you the Georgia Pacific magistrate appeal that they filed last December on their value that was added to the role for 20, or their, their total value for 2324. But interesting to note, it, the 2324 followed their last 15-year SIP exemption. So for 2324, all of that value that had been exempted and for the 15 years was added to the rule. And the statute requires this because this appeal is a large amount for this county and it triggers a quarter of 1% of our entire SS value. So it, with that happening, we're required by law to set aside the appeal amount that we figure that, an estimate of taxes on in a interest-bearing account. We've come up based on their value with an amount, which I gave you a value synopsis in the attachments, that it's going to be about 1.8 million. And also in your attachments is what that means to all of the taxing districts. So there, like I said, there is no other option. We have to set it aside. It's to protect any, you know, bonding or something else that we would have to do instead of doing this. But it is kind of a shocking revelation, so. Any questions?
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, this isn't the first time this has happened. Is there any legislative fix possible because we want to be fair in our administration of tax law? On the other hand, this is difficult, cumbersome, a negative development for every taxing jurisdiction in Klotzup County. Is there any effective response so that we can address this before it happens again?
Well, as you know, Commissioner Thompson, anyone is allowed to appeal their value. And that's just a right that comes under the statutory requirements. And so I hesitate to stop anyone from doing that, but I understand your frustration.
Well, yeah, because eventually we gave the money back. But in the meantime, every jurisdiction was to a greater or lesser extent crippled in the execution of their, their legal authority and responsibility. So you're right, I'm frustrated. Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Webb?
How, I'm assuming that we don't have a million plus dollars sitting in an account someplace. I mean, how, how do we come up with this money? Is this money we could borrow, for instance? You know, what are our options?
So we will be setting aside this money once they pay their taxes. So it is money that they're going to pay to us. We'll set it into an account that's called a potential refund account. And the good news about that is that we're bypassing the original requirement under the law that we had to pay 12% interest, which is 1% a month, which is what the statute allows for. But by setting it in this potential refund credit account, we are only obligated to pay their portion of the investment interest plus whatever the refund amount and only on the refund amount if there is a successful appeal.
I see.
So it's money we haven't received yet, but we will set aside instead of distribute.
Okay. And, and how long a process is this appeal process usually? I mean, what, what, could you describe it a little bit of kind of what? Who's the, who does the appeal go to, et cetera?
The appeal, because it's a state appraised property, doesn't go through the normal BOPDA process or the PVAB that we're calling it now. It, they go directly to the Oregon Tax Court Magistrate Division.
Okay.
So in that case, we are an interested party. And Anthony, please chime in if you have something to say about this, but we are an interested party. But the Oregon Department of Revenue is actually the, the other, the defendant. And the Department of, Oregon Department of Justice is, is actually the attorney.
Oh. And how, how long do these things usually take?
Well, I'm hoping not very long because we're required to not only set this aside this year, but any subsequent year, the same amount. Or, you know, whatever the estimate is in the 24-year until it's decided.
And didn't we just recently make some kind of a, an adjustment to their SIP?
Their, their 15-year SIP expired in 2223. That was the last year that they were covered by the exemption. So we did put that value that had been exempted onto the tax roll for 2324. I'm not sure, maybe you're talking about that we also entered into a new SIP agreement with them on new property going forward, which I don't think will be in effect until 2026.
Well.
Any more questions, Commissioner Webb?
No, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Commissioner Banks?
So I'm just noticing, hey kiddos. I'm just noticing on our list of impacted taxing districts, Klotzup Care, Klotzup Community College, Jewel School District, Seaside School District, Jewel and Seaside aren't on, aren't on the school equalization fund. And if you combine Seaside's losses due to the HCP with these losses, they're, they're reaching close to a million dollars in future losses per year. And that is really concerning for a school district. And obviously Jewel's already in a concerning position. But I'm looking at Klotzup Care and like our jail and fairgrounds and ourselves. That's close to $200,000 just for our own budget. So I'm just calling out a, a double whammy, I guess, or a triple whammy if you want to add in the FEMA BiOP to all of this for our taxing districts. And I don't know, that makes me real nervous for our economics coming into the next, next few years. If we are facing that much of a decrease in revenues for, for these taxing districts. So anyhow, I was just wanting to point out that concern as we're discussing this and, and I, that, it's, it's worrisome.
Yeah, thank you Commissioner Banks. Commissioner Thompson?
Well, Mr. Chair, I, I understand our assessor's point that, that, you know, tax, people are taxed to have a right to dispute the valuation. I understand that. We've been through this with them before. And now here we are again. Is it possible that before we support grant applications or other kinds of supports for organizations? This doesn't sound right, but I want to say it anyway. That we say, look, if we do this for you, if we're your good partner, you're our good partner in return. And you don't hold up the revenue by disputing your valuation. Is that legal? I suppose that's for county council. Probably not, huh?
Well, definitely not, you know, retroactive. We can't go back to the SIP that we granted them, you know, just recently. But I think that it could be part of the conversation when we talk to them. I don't know if we could enter into like a legal agreement, but it could be part of the discussion when we're moving, you know, in, in future SIPs or other, other things.
I, I hope that we take a harder negotiating stance because this really is very problematic for every taxing jurisdiction. The list is long, the impact is great. And eventually things get worked out and the money comes through. That, that was my sense of what happened the last time. Am I accurate in that? Did they achieve a significant reduction in, in their valuation?
Yes, they did. We actually, it was $2 million at that time. And we, Klotzup County quite creatively bonded that amount for all of the taxing districts and then took it, their, their share over 10 years. We paid, or they, we, we took it back from them over 10 years. So it was a smaller increment. And honestly, there is a provision in the, the statute that allows us to make payments of the refund going forward. I haven't investigated that thoroughly, but there is a provision to do that. So it's, it's, it's less refunding back, but it also, it still doesn't allow us to hold that money that we have to hold back, you know, once they pay the taxes. So it'll be interesting to work that out.
I don't know what to say except that it's, I find it very troubling. Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree with you Commissioner Thompson. It is troubling. Commissioner Banks?
Um, so is there some way for, I don't like, are the current SIP that we just approved is what, it's a 15-year, is that correct? Okay, so I don't plan on sitting in this seat in 15 years. I mean, I, I hope to be close to retirement and, you know, traveling. But I, is there some way to make note of this situation with them? So that the upcoming board in 15 years, when the SIP agreement is, is in the future, that this topic is addressed? Because I, I'm looking at Seaside School District losing $420,000. That's a lot of teachers. That's five teachers. So I, and the, I know we can't control, you know, everybody has this right. I totally understand that. And I just don't want to flip this onto a bond and, and have our taxpayers have to pay the difference. I'm not interested in, in figuring out that methodology. I, we are already so strapped as, as people in this community and we're, our taxes are already high. And it's pretty unaffordable for, for a working family to live here. So I don't want to make it more unaffordable for a working family to live here. And so I guess I'm, I'm just, I'm a little miffed. So anyhow, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Do we have any other comments or questions? Suzanne, anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Monica?
No, I mean, we, you know, to Suzanne's point, it's not something that we want to do but have to do. And we hear the concerns and have made notes to, you know, really scrutinize the situation in the future.
Yeah. Thank you, Monica. And thank you Suzanne. Well, we don't have any other items on our agenda for the work session, so we'll go ahead and adjourn.
Well, we don't have any other items on our agenda for the work session, so we'll go ahead and adjourn.
If I may, Chair, just really quick, I just want to compliment the elections team for pulling off a, a long evening and a successful, you know, ballot count. And just to give you all an update on next steps as far as the updates that will occur. So there will be an update this evening at six P M. And then thereafter on Wednesdays as more ballots come in. And then I also just wanted to remind everybody that the Coast Guard will be hosting a Veterans Event on Friday, the eighth, at nine A M. at the Armory. And the county offices will be closed in recognition of Veterans Day on Monday, the eleventh. So thank you for all who observed.
Yeah, thank you, Monica. I really appreciate that you gave that update. And we do, our hats off to our election team, Elections Department, Tracy Kavenco, our county clerk, for all of the hard work. They had votes posted right away at eight o'clock. And I know that they worked extremely hard on that. So please pass along our appreciation for, for their efforts. And yes, Veterans Appreciation is, is, is a, is a great event. And so glad that the county has been such a great partner in that. Commissioner Toyoka?
To dovetail what Monica says, we're kicking off, you know, it's Operation Green Light time. As well as the Veterans Breakfast with the V S O is tomorrow. So everything's kicking off, you know, for Veterans Day and appreciation.
Yeah, thank you.
Get those green lights out.
That's right. Thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. Commissioner Banks?
I just wanted to send a, a thank you to our elections folks. Mainly just because I noticed that nationally, we were one of the first counties in Oregon to be posted. And so I thought that that was actually pretty interesting. High fives to everyone who, who were, who were working hard last night. That was, it was just, I was watching the elections and I saw our county and then one of the eastern counties post first. So it was fun.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Banks. Commissioner Webb, and I see that we have Tracy Kavenco, our county clerk, on too. So, Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, I'd also like to extend another thanks to the Sheriff's Office and, and all of his, his force for their cooperation. I contacted him, I guess, late last week. I was a little nervous with, with our county manager on leave. I wanted to know kind of what was happening. And the sheriff explained the, the ways, the, the several ways in which his force was, was cooperating with the clerk's office. And I really, really appreciated that. I, I thought it was a wonderful bit of intergovernmental cooperation.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you, Commissioner Webb. And then our county clerk, Tracy Kavenco, would you like to say anything?
Thank you, Commissioner and Commissioners. I just want to thank you for your appreciation and your support with everything. We did have a good, smooth night and the Sheriff's Office was great support, local police was great support. And I really felt safe and secure and supported by everybody. So thank you all for that.
Yeah, and thank you. Thank you for all you do. And again, that was one of the most, I, I think heated and watched elections ever. I really appreciate our, our clerk and our, our Elections Division in, in managing it so well. So thanks again for all you do.
You're very welcome.
Do we have any other items for the good of the order? Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Have a good rest of your Wednesday. Take care.